I was just getting this. You can find your seat here, right? After all, it might be coming. It's anywhere, anywhere you go to. Wait just a minute. No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
Wait.
What can I do there?
With the candidates.
Uh, turn around. Okay, um, I, I appreciate if y'all would all start new. Tell them your name and what's your, uh, want you'd like to do if you become, uh, a councilman.
Good evening, my name is Helen Juckins, and which most of y'all know me. Uh, if I become city councilman, I would like to see Ladonia cleaned up a little bit more. I would like to see things come here, I would like to see the community to come together as one. Because in order for Ladonia to grow and move forward, we will have to do it as a community.
Alright, I'm Dean Taneo, most of y'all don't know me, I've been in Ladonia for the past twenty something years. And if I become a city council person, that's where I'd like to see, uh, Ladonia come together. And grow with the lake and upcoming business that should come through Ladonia. Um, as I was saying, I'd like to see Ladonia cleaned up. And I looking forward to working with the team, if I become a team person, and come up with some good ideas to move forward.
Hey, Jim Blackman, and, uh, Ladonia needs a lot of work. Can't do it overnight, it's a great time, but we all work together, we can make all, all things happen.
Uh, my name is Deisha Throwfield, a long time resident, um, I'd like to see the streets, build the potholes better, and, um, like to clean the area up and get a place for the hyer for some patrol.
Leslie Robertson, been here ten years. I want to see the people helped. We've got a lot of elderly, we've got a lot of children. I want to see us grow with the population. Not so much make it a huge city, but just, we need to take care of, of the people here first. We need to help them, instead of going off and doing everything. That's my main concern, and get this city back together.
Thank you, anybody have any questions for the candidates?
What are you, Helen? Helen? I, I don't know. He said everybody, but I, thank you.
Well, I thank y'all, and, uh, I hope that I see your smiling faces after race six.
Can I say one thing? Yes, if y'all don't win this election, we have another one next year.
Amen.
We need everybody in this community to stand up, do a role, so we all know what's going on. So if you don't win this year, get out there, let's do it again next year.
I would like to say that I believe that the council belongs to the citizens. And that we should all be open as a council, so the citizens will know what is going on. And not be a secretive group, that only a few privileged people know what's going on. And I hope that that's what we can be, uh, after this election and the election after that.
So, can we ask some questions? So, um, I, just the comments that you meant, I was just gonna ask on those. Um, Deisha, you mentioned potholes and the police, how, how do you feel like you can help as a, sitting on the city council to help with, address the concern of potholes and, and getting a police?
Well, I'm hoping that since they're grading up, uh, some of this highway out here on thirty-four, that we might be able to contact the, uh, commissioner, understanding that he's getting a lot of it, a commissioner degree, uh, Jerry Magnus, and maybe that he will donate some of that back to us. To maybe fill, so we wouldn't have to spend as much money on, on buy it all. And as far as the policemen go, uh, we have a candidate that we've interviewed. And so hopefully, um, his, all his background checks and everything will come back good.
Good, and then moving forward with the police department, you want to get more volunteer, is it, are we gonna have volunteers?
I'm not sure, be on him, 'cause he'll be the chief and see how he wants to set it up and, you know, follow his lead. Instead of building it for him before he gets here. I think he'd be better off if he was, you know, a part, you know, the bigger part of it.
Um, I don't want to take all the time, but I just, Helen, you mentioned, um, cleaning up. Clean up being a little bit nicer.
Yes.
What, how do, how will you do that? How, how do you feel like you can support that and get behind that and make changes to help us have a cleaner city or coastal or whatever?
I think, I don't know if it's a city ordinance, but I think like, yards, stuff that's stacked up against buildings, it need to be cleaned up. Like we having a cleanup day, this is the time everybody can throw away anything that they don't want. We can clean it up, we can mow the, the long side of the roads. And I know a lot of that come from, everybody personally, have to take pride in what they own for it to be clean. Because if you take pride in it, you should automatically want to clean it up. But there are places in Ladonia that really need to be cleaned up. And that would help it look better when people driving through. And it would help the people in the town to take pride in where they live.
So the, the places that are not clean now, how are they get, the people that own it will clean it?
At that point, we have to figure out. But it's not gonna stop the, that is, to me, it need to be cleaned. However, if I'm on city council, talk with the council, see how we can get it done, whether we do it as a group, or as a community cleanup day, or however, I still would like to see it cleaned up.
How do you, how do you feel, um, that we clean up, um, address that, where we, those that don't want to clean up, right? Those just don't seem to, are you thinking ordinances and fines?
Well, you know, most cities have ordinances where you have to be clean around your place. You know, some cities have where you just can't park cars and let them just sit until it begin to look like a wrecking yard. You know?
So what do you think that you'd like to do, is that something that you'd, you'd get behind is, is ordinances and?
Yes.
Um, Dean, you talked about growing with the lake, what does that, what does that mean to you? How do we grow with the lake? How do we?
The lake is, the lake is coming, so to grow with the lake, right now is the beginning of stages, so, and as far as being a Ladonian resident, we see the lake growing, but we don't know what's actually behind the lake. So I feel like we need to, uh, come together as a team and like, like you said, like, figure out what's going on and not have, I'm sorry, the mayor, not have secrets, you know, certain groups know what's going on with the lake and how it's gonna benefit Ladonia. So by us finding out the end and outset of the lake and how we can benefit from it and learn from it, then we'll know what we need to do for Ladonia to grow with it, grow with it, with the process.
How do you think that you will be able to find out what we need to do in Ladonia to grow with the lake? How, how can you do that?
Well, me myself, um, I'm sure there's people in place for that, um, like the council's already in place right now and the lake's been going on over the years, so I know there's information that certain people know. Um, so once, you know, if I become a city council person, I would just get with that person and find out what's going on. And, uh, see how I can benefit or provide feedback or, uh, do my due diligence to see how can I gather that information to provide back to the citizens of Ladonia. To see, you know, what that we can do to benefit on those of the lake, um, as well.
And I was making notes, Jimmy, you were, you were talking about cleaning up Ladonia too?
Yeah.
So, how, how had it?
Maybe you can, like, say for instance, y'all go put the flag out here?
Yeah.
That's, that's a, that's a cleanup, right?
I'm sure we think that'd be a cleanup, having a roll, tatters, flag, you know, start like that, stuff like that, appearance.
Okay.
You know?
How do you, how do you feel like as a city we can address the, um, the abandoned properties? That we really don't have someone?
Well, we just have to go to the owners. You know, address them first. You know, and if, if they need help, you know, like, we might pitch in. You know, like I've got a tractor and shredder, I can, uh, if they need shredded, before it gets way too tough, I can help there, you know?
Tell them how you also help, because you, you tend to not toot your own horn out here at the, um, when you cleaned it all up before it could be mowed out here where all the, um, what is that called over here, Jimmy?
Cemetery.
Oh.
Before, on the other side of the cemetery.
The, uh?
City yard.
City yard, yeah.
It, it, it got bad.
And Jimmy went and just did it.
My volunteer helped, went over and cleaned it up and mowed, got it looking out, you know? But I don't know if he's still back, going back to that, I don't think he's got mowed this year, you know, so. The grass is growing.
But you picked up a lot of tools, y'all, you guys, it was bad.
From the old employees over there, that, they were just tools, brand new tools, Kevin.
Really, wow.
Yeah, so, you know, and I think Greg has done a lot towards that, you know?
Getting it fixed, not making it a mess, you know?
Well, you know.
Just to clarify.
Just coming in and fixing somebody else's problem, they wouldn't take the trouble, you know?
Right.
And Greg has done an excellent job.
Well, you, you focus on cleaning, I see one thing that we don't have in Ladonia is a dumpster. I know Con Gap have one, uh, that they have set out for, you know, you do have to wait once a year to dump stuff and dump to clean up Ladonia. So instead of waiting once a year, if we have a dumpster on site, um, maybe the yard wouldn't be junked up throughout the year. And you have access to take their stuff down there, you know, weekly, daily, whenever you accumulate, just dump it as, as you know.
Yeah, we need to talk to Magnus about that, because Magnus used to do that for Dodge City. Would park one on Dodge City's area and, and do that for them. I think it was once every three months, I don't think they did it every month.
Well, even if we, uh, uh, regular dumpster, like when they come dump once a week, uh, you know, I don't know how much it costs, but that could be something we can get, even sit out there, you know, year round. And like you said, you got old bicycles or, you know, old something that's sitting around, you gotta wait once a year for the dump, 'cause you know, once you put the two dumps out there, it's full the same day.
Thank you, thank you.
The same day it's full, so then you're like, I ain't, I, I can't throw away your brown, I'm gonna keep it for another year.
Well, they quit doing it because people were tearing down houses and putting all the house in the dumpster.
Construction in it now.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you just have to monitor it, you know what I mean? So, uh, you monitor it, uh, I don't know how you monitor it full time, but, you know, lock it out, out to the dark and, and open it up during daytime, you just monitor. Um, but, you know, there's still no excuse for us not to get one, so, you know, of that. I mean, once, even if they do put old housing, ain't there what we complaining about?
You know?
That's, I guess the wood, ain't burning, you can burn it, but if they fit it up, just dumping it, then I think they'll have Ladonia out. Instead of waiting once a year. That's one step I see that way.
That's right.
Who, who does that once a year cleanup?
Well, the city gets the dumpsters and, and get the dumpsters.
I don't think once a cleanup is once a year they bring the dumps in full Ladonia, which is a good thing. So, you know, we get the access to throw old trash and old bicycles and dollar dollar in there, uh, once a year. So we look forward for it to come, but you, you gotta be the first one in line to get in.
That's right, that's right.
Chamber of Commerce does. Well, they also get the dumpsters, don't they, once a year?
We have enough to get four of them. We, we reserve a budget, four of them every year.
Okay, that'll help.
Do they, do they come in conjunction with ours?
Um, we, sometimes we do, it depends on how many of them come, we usually try to add one. We didn't this year, 'cause there were already two coming. Uh, we do them at the fall suite, we will have one or two, and it'll get replaced.
'Cause those, what was out there now, they, they was full when it went to Friday.
Those are the cities, yeah.
We could get two more really, I mean, if we have the money, if we have the money. They fill up fast, nobody can email you?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so you fill up fast, so now we gotta wait another year. If we wanna dumpster, you always gonna keep looking full and junking it until that time.
They argue for a spring and fall, Tim.
This is, this is kinda off of y'all's, I mean, it's on the subject of what we're speaking of, but unfortunately it's not towards y'all's candidate's secret, maybe y'all can help with it. What do we have, 'cause I'm new here and I don't even have trash service yet, so, so I'm staying out at the RV park, so I got a dumpster out there. Uh, what do we have for residential trash? Who handles that, is that a city thing, or a county thing, or an independent contractor?
The city does, and we're in contract with Republic Services, and they're out of Commerce.
Okay, so?
They're all outside Commerce, I think it's a Campbell address, but the dug, the dug yard is out there, that's where we get the dug.
But y'all, y'all have a company that comes and picks up the trash? Do they not do, like, everywhere else I've ever lived in my life, they've had once a month where they would come out and pick up brush? And then the other month, one day, they would come out and pick up appliances and bicycles and things like that? Do they not offer that service to the citizens of Ladonia?
I don't know if they've ever been asked, to be honest with her.
That would be, so I bet that would make a big difference if you could, you know, especially with the spring, 'cause we're fixing to have a whole bunch of brush piles.
Even if they had a tire to pick up.
Huh?
Even if they had a tire to pick up.
Yeah, tires are picky, 'cause they won't pick those up anywhere else either because of the, having the?
Unless they have somewhere to take them.
Deal with them, yeah. But I mean, the rest of the stuff y'all are speaking of, I, I would think that Republic would, you know? I don't know if it's gonna raise the, the bill, you know, where we gotta pay more money, but.
I do know when you order a dumpster from Republic, they will not take paint or tires.
Right, yeah, nobody will take hazardous materials. But I mean, like, we're, like I say, we're fixing to have a bunch of tree trimming coming up if it ain't already going on, and yard maintenance that, that's happening, and, and people gonna just have just a bunch of stuff sitting in the yard, 'cause they can't get rid of it. And if Republic could help out, that'd be fabulous. So I guess the question would be, is that something y'all would entertain if y'all were elected? To turn it into pertinent information for this, for this meeting?
Right, we need that, 'cause the city needs cleaning.
If I can, last question I have was, was Leslie, you had mentioned about helping people here first. How, how do you see doing that? What is it that you, you can do if you were on the city council to help the people here first, what does that mean?
I'm already doing a lot of it, you know, I pick up a bunch of people to do for a bunch of people, I go deliver them or hold it until they can get to the house. And we need more volunteers for that. We need to have somebody checking on the elderly, and, you know?
Is that, is that?
A lot of people need a lot of things, they can't afford it here.
Well, there's three chairs.
Instead of trying to march them off, we need to help them. There's money in the city council budget, they need to help them. Get a park for the kids, we desperately need a park for the children. I've heard ten years now. We're gonna get it, that's your dream, we're gonna get it. At one point, I have a friend working at Home Depot. And Home Depot is notorious for throwing everything away, they throw away lawn mowers, they throw away brand new skill saws, uh, concrete bags that are just kinda open a little bit, wood, windows, doors, everything else. And I came straight into this and I said, look, Home Depot, you fill it out. And the paper worked out, and you're through. My friend works there, he can load up everything we need, you know, list, well, well, deliver it, he's never heard a word back. Those things are out there, we could get windows, we could get shoes, we could get all that. The city needs to do that, and just hear it, ten five dollars. If they aren't at the five dollars, let them have their. You know, get it livable a little bit, as best we can.
I didn't want to take all the time, I'm sorry.
You do.
Anybody else got any questions? Well, I thank y'all for being here, and, uh, I hope everybody turns out for voting this time. Wait a second, Jan, did you want to say something?
Come out and vote, you know, and everybody appreciates your support.
Ask questions, come in and tell them what you stand for.
Well, I was at the other ones, and, uh, if it's okay, they can see that, but if they have questions afterwards, but I thank you, yeah, I thank you. Yeah, I can talk to them after the meeting.
Did you want to announce that one candidate is no longer running?
This, I don't know this last name.
Igley.
Igley, Monty Igley is no longer on the ballot, I understand, well, he may be on the ballot.
On the ballot.
Couldn't get off at the time.
He's not running, so remember that when you vote.
And remember, there's three seats, not just one.
Oh, yeah, there's three, three open seats, not one, so you can vote for three people.
Who are the open seats?
Do what now?
Who, who are the three open seats?
Uh, Deisha Throwfield, uh, Russell Duckworth, and Sheena Aubrey. Those are the three that are open. And the way it goes is they take the top three with the most votes. It's not, you don't have to sign up for a particular seat, it's the top three. With the most votes.
Okay, cool.
We have about four minutes before the town hall meeting starts, if anybody wants to stretch their legs, oh, one.
Do you want to tell them that they're going to have questions for the candidates after the meeting?
Well, if anybody thinks of a question after the meeting, you can still talk to the candidates if you want to, and if they're here.
I know, I know, that's our problem. I'm way too close to front.
We have, uh, some guests here that, uh, has some interesting, uh, interesting, uh, news for us to think about. Uh, it's Hickory Creek, and it's Brad, Mike, and Aaron. Would y'all please, uh, talk to the citizens, don't be bashful?
We don't buy it.
Sometimes.
We're with Hickory Creek S U D over in Celeste, we cover a hundred feet of square miles in that area. We go from the town of Maryup to Leonard's, back up to Bailey, over to Wool City, and then back to Greenville City Limits. And we cover a pretty good area. We was, uh, talked to by Trap Control, which does your skate assist, which controls all your, you know, your well readings and stuff, it's, uh,
Yeah, your tank elevations.
Yeah, it just covers all that.
Turns your wells on and off.
He approached us to, to do what the Patterson Group is doing for you right now, about what, reading your wells and your sewer and your intakes and all, all your meters and stuff. So, we came up, we talked to your mayor and, uh, I believe, I think, I'm sorry, I can't remember.
That's okay.
A couple of your, your council members. And we really don't, not doing that kind of work, but we did make an offer that we could come in and, and take your system and run your sewer and your water. And you wouldn't be at any expenses that way, instead of paying another Patterson Group, I mean, what was it?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand dollars a year.
Plus.
Plus.
Plus your repairs. Uh, if we came and did, we would actually take over your water and your sewer, we would be responsible for all the repairs. Any upgrades and everything, it would be strictly paid by us. We'd also take over your, your debt service, which is your loan and everything, but we'd also take over your, your income coming in on it. Us doing that, your estimates that we can get, you're in a, kinda in a break even position, where your expenses and your, you know, liabilities are pretty, or your income, you know, pretty marginal. So if, if we took it over, then you would still have your property taxes and your sales taxes that you could do, uh, anything else in the city with. And then you could apply for grants and stuff like that for like, street repairs and stuff, there's a ton of grants out there for you, but. But we're just here to answer any questions, if you had anything you wanted to talk to us about or had any good questions, so, yes, ma'am?
Do you also handle the chemicals for the, the water?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We, we would take care of everything. If your, if your well went down, we would replace the pump and everything, and there would be any cost to, we'd take over all that.
So you will, you'll check the water, the water chemicals and make sure they're?
Seven days a week, we'd have somebody here doing it. Yes.
Uh, being new here, one of the things that caught my attention the other day when they were talking about it at the council meeting, or at the, it was supposed to be planning zoning meeting, I think, uh, but they were talking about it, and, uh, like a water meter right now, the city's charging like two hundred, three hundred bucks for it, and they said y'all charge like twenty-five hundred bucks or something if I get a new water meter?
Now, if, if it was just replacing your water meter, that?
No, a new one.
Buy a new one?
Yes.
For fifty-eight hundred dollars.
Fifty-eight hundred, okay, and it was like, three hundred or something with the city?
That's part of what's got the city.
No, I'm, I'm new and I need a water meter, so I'm asking.
Eric could probably explain more than I can, but if, you have different impact fees and stuff, which, for every meter that you put on your system, takes a toll from your wells, your towers, and your lines and everything else, so you have to recover that cost of how much impact it's gonna have on your system. So you would charge a, a, the, the impact fee, and I don't think y'all are doing that now.
Obviously not.
And, and your meter cost, it's probably gone up substantially, I think y'all are running like two or three different kinds of meters. We hadn't got to look and see exactly what you've got, we, we run master meter, which is a fixed base.
We run a fixed base?
I'll let him explain the, the more technical stuff.
That won't help me any problem, but.
We can actually read your meter from our office, no matter where it is in the system. The advantage of doing, if you get up at two o'clock in the morning and flush your commode, if I'm looking at your meter, I can say, well, they flushed their commode while ago. The advantage to that, if you have a leak, the way it is right now, you could have a small leak, your commode or something like that, you won't catch it till they read the meters the next time. We'll catch a leak within twenty-four hours, unless I'm mowing, fall off in a mud hole, and rain in three months.
Okay, y'all say you can catch our leak, but can we go out and read that meter, like we do ours now? If we have a conflict with your reading, can we do that?
Yes, it, it read, I mean, anybody.
Can we read it, not, not just y'all, can we read it?
You can read it to check your meter, but, uh, what, the day that we read meters, it instantly send it to us and everybody's meter be read at the same time.
I, I check mine periodically. Another question is too, say the chemicals get off a little bit, how do y'all notify us? How would you notify us, would you just notify the city, or would you notify all of us?
Right now, we have the meters in our computer system, and if you have a leak and it comes, starts up, if that water doesn't shut off within, within twenty-four hours, when we come in in the morning, we turn the computers on, we have an alert right there. So-and-so's meter, possible leak, and then we go and check to find out then.
As far as your chemicals go, we, we'll read the meters, I mean, the chlorinators every day and they make any adjustments, they take samples daily. So there shouldn't be any miscalculations on that, 'cause we.
So, if the leak's on your side?
We fix it.
You fix it.
Yeah.
How will we know it's on your side and not on ours? Will y'all notify us, or the city notify us?
We have a, on our skater system, it will automatically send out text messages or emails, or however you want to be notified, but it has to, the system has to run 24 hours before it will come up and tell you that you have a leak. I mean, we don't know whether you're filling up a swimming pool or something, so it wouldn't come up if you've been running water for three hours, and if it runs water continuously for 24 hours, it, it'll show us that it leaked.
But we've had customers in the last year that's had $10,000.
They had a leak.
They didn't hear, they think you said 2,000, you said 10,000, correct?
10,000?
You gotta speak up, they couldn't hear you back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know the computers go down sometimes.
$10,000 water bill in one month.
So, if your computer goes down, will it mess up our water system?
No. And as far as the chemicals, we read them every day. We'll come in and we'll take it and read it. Like in our case, we've got four wells that are scattered over an area of probably 10 miles at different places, and we go out there every day and I take a sample. Oh, I hate to even listen myself. And then, every, once a month, we'll, we'll go around to somebody's house and take what they call a bacteria sample, and we take it to a lab and have it tested. We take our samples to the sewer plant in Sherman.
So, what about the water bill itself? Is it going to go up higher, lower? What do you think is something?
My, I use 5,000 gallons, I, I use about 5,000 gallons a, a month on mine, and my water bill runs somewhere around 70 dollars.
So, are you going to charge us for the meter, for every person to get a new meter?
No, we will, we'll put all, now, when we, if we was taking on, we wouldn't come in and immediately replace all the meters, because that's going to be probably about 180,000 dollars worth of cost. So, we would do it over the next year, maybe, or something like that. And my understanding, this process is going to be about six months before it can be a permanent bill, if you voted on it right now, so...
Now, we pay the bill through the city, how do we pay that bill?
You can pay it online, or you can send a check in. If you have a lot of cash customers that come in more paid in person, we could have a designated date, we could have somebody up here to do it.
So, the bill will go to y'all?
Yes, ma'am.
Not through the city?
Right.
The city won't be paying y'all, we'll be paying y'all.
Yes. Yes, sir.
All right, another question that had come up the other day was, most of the sewers here run down the middle of the street. I found that out when I took my sewer tap in. If y'all have to dig up the road to fix a sewer line, do y'all replace the road too, or is that back up to the city to fix the road?
We would go back in and replace the line, and then put the field dirt back in, and then probably rock back on it, and if it was a new paved street, we would probably go back in and re-assball where we...
Okay, so y'all fix the road back to whatever condition it was before?
Yeah, to whatever condition it was in. I mean, that's something that we had to work out with the city.
Right, and that was one of the questions they had asked at that other meeting, and nobody knew the answer, so y'all are here and we're supposed to be asking y'all questions, so I thought I'd ask.
There's a thing with upper trinity on a contract that, once a lake is built, we're going to have to, for every, correct me if I'm wrong, for every gallon, they could go, what, 50 cents to a dollar a gallon? Are you guys going to be working with upper trinity at all on any of this?
Upper trinity has no say over what we charge you on your bills.
That the contract...
Reads, but they do, but they could put 50 cents to a dollar on every gallon of water.
The contract will have to be gone through by attorneys. I mean, there's no if, ands, or buts, they'll have to sort it out and figure out, hey, this is something they've got in there, or not got in there, or whatever. But they're not going to rely on upper trinity for anything at this point, they don't need them.
They don't need them, but you know, that, that adds a lot to our cost, water, so that's why I'm asking.
What is it exactly to charge for?
Protect the, I don't see why, we are the ones who have to pay for protecting the lake in emergency out there on the lake, will, that's what that money's for, correct?
I have to read the contract again because I haven't looked at it in quite some time.
Are they saying that you have to pay 50 cents to a dollar for every gallon you pump out of your well?
Yes.
We'll get you a copy of the contract. That's the, is way to handle it, that's where there's no if, and, or buts.
I'm sorry, 50 cents to a dollar?
Yeah, I was just reading.
I don't think it's that, but yes, we'll get you a contract before we sit down and say, "Hey, this is what it is."
So, that's, that is my, that, that's one of my concerns.
I think after we have a chance to read the contract, we can probably expand on that a little further, but I'd like to read the actual verbiage of it before.
Well, I'm just giving you a heads up.
Back, back to the chemicals, they would have to follow all of T C E Q regulations. So, if the chemicals got out of whack or whatever, they got to answer T C E Q. I mean, and they've got to get it back, you know, in order and, and take, if, if there's a boil water notice or whatever, they'll send that out, whatever has to happen, they'll handle that.
And they'll take care of our sewer out there?
Sewer, they'll put the fence up, which is a, a large cost. What, whatever T C E Q says they have to do, they will do it.
One of the things that, after we talked the other day, and I've kind of drove around here for the last couple of days, is, we're going to try, if this goes through, to bring this up to our standards, which a lot of people will tell you that we're trying to keep up with technology. We've got all new computer systems, like I said, our meters are all computerized. One thing that bothers me, in the state of Texas, it's not required, and there's a lot of water systems, a lot of them, that don't have what we call backflow preventers.
Say that again?
Backflow preventers. And we require that on our system. I just come from, well, him and I just come from a state meeting down in Austin a couple of weeks ago, and I was in a roundtable session with eight different water districts, and none of them used it. I'm originally from Kentucky. Up there, we started putting them on our systems 25 years ago. And the reason being, okay, if I was a farmer here and you're out here mixing up some roundup, and you got your garden holes over in the tank, and you get a telephone call and you're over here doing something, and we have a leak, it's going to suck that tank dry. Believe it or not, that one water system I worked for, before we put the backflow preventers in there, we probably burned up 15 to 20 hot water heaters a year. And it sucked the hot water heater dry, that hot water would come out and then turn, burn the meter up, and we'd have to replace it with a new meter. It's really funny, when you've got a leak and here's all this bright blue water coming out of the pipe, and it's from your commode. And if we get a bad sample, then the state's all over our butt to find out why, you know, where this come from and why, and y'all don't have any of those.
How about when there's a break in the line, do you flush the line out? Because I've had to call EPA about three times on that one.
It depends upon what size of line, on our system, if it's a smaller line, we don't even shut the water off, we, we fix it wet.
And away there is no flush?
Right, there's water constantly coming out of the pipe while we're fixing it.
Why do y'all want to take over Ladona's water system? Is it as an investment, or what?
We want to grow. They, we're in the area right now that where, they, every TRWA and everybody says that when you get from a threshold of 2,500 to 5,000 water meters, is your breaking point to where you start making your investments back on everything. And right now, the only profit that you have is when you just raise your rates enough that you're, you know, making more than you're spending. So, if we can get to that point quicker, then we actually have more money that we put back into the system. We're a nonprofit, so we're at 1,700 meters right now where we're at. You're at 300, and then, as we grow, we're going to get to that threshold where our, we have more money coming in on revenue from water sales, and then we can put more money back into the system. So, that's what we're looking at. Us being a nonprofit, we would run Ladona as a separate entity than ours. So, any profit that would be made here would be put right back into your system, we wouldn't make any of them.
Would, would you consider in the future, when we can get so much water from the lake in the contract, you'll, you'll find out. Is there any way that you would want to help with that at all?
No, if, we're groundwater and you're groundwater, and you can't mix groundwater with surface water.
Right, I know that.
We'd have to build a water treatment plant, and it has to be manned by a licensed operator 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which means four different operators, because it's not feasible. We, we would definitely want to have your allotment transferred from Ladona to us, for a case down the road, if down or north Texas municipal water district requires us all to go surface water, then we would have that water available to us. But as of right now, we wouldn't use the water for anything.
Well, right now, you couldn't use any of that water out on the lake at all without building a treatment plant.
We knew that, yes.
It's, yeah, it's closer to eight to 10. It's very expensive to build a treatment plant right now.
Eight to 10 million?
And a licensed operator. I'm assuming Texas is already, I know in Kentucky, I was in a town just like this, and we had our own water, and the state come in and said, "Well, you got to have a licensed operator at this plant 24/7," and we couldn't afford it. So, we ended up merging in with the county water district because we just, we couldn't afford it. You know, a licensed operator is going to cost you 60,000 to 70,000 dollars a year per portion, and it just went to waste.
I think this is really good information as a first conversation, a couple of questions. So, do you have a, an apples-to-apples comparison, or can you scale a previous project so that it matches up with the size of our community to show us the year before they got involved with Hickory Creek, the year they got involved, and subsequent years? So that we can see what the financial impact is to the community?
We don't have, we haven't done any business with a water district or municipal.
You're our far peak.
Okay, so, what are you going to base your estimates off of if you don't have any experience in this type of environment?
What do you mean, bas- based on what?
Estimates are based on experience, right? So, I mean, if, if we start talking about soup-to-nuts kind of stuff, we're going to, we're going to want to know, you know, if you have to replace a pump, you say, replace the pump at no cost to you, well, that's like the free lunch, right? I either pay for the lunch, or the person who owns the restaurant pays for the lunch. It's not free, the money comes from somewhere. So, if the pump gets replaced, somehow that money's going to have to go back into the system, right? So, I want to, I want to make sure everybody understands that when the pump gets replaced, that that's not free, that when the chemicals have to be purchased, that's not free, that's a part of the fees that we pay to you guys for managing the water system. So, I just want to make sure that when we start, as we go down the road on this conversation, that we have real data to look at. What's, you know, what the costs are, what happens if we add 500,000 dollars worth of expenses in one year? What does the water bill look like the following year? Because I think that's something, you know, we've kind of, our system's 75% appreciated, right? We know we've got old equipment, we know we've got old infrastructure, we know at some point it's going to have to be replaced. That's information we can look at and compare to what you guys are offering, if we understand what the, what the follow-on years look like.
I mean, you know what your expenses are in your water and your sewer right now, and you know what you're drawing in on your income, so I don't know what's your margin. We, we haven't seen figures, so we don't really have that data in front of us to know exactly what you're bringing in on your income. I was comparing, your well over here pumps 230 gallons a minute, and we have one well in our system that's around 250, so I'm comparing that well, our electrical and chlorine cost to it, compared to what you're paying Patterson, your Texas Water Development Board alone, and your 50% of your employees on your public works and your secretary, and, I can't remember what else was it, and... If my estimates are correct, you're not making much of anything. And then if you have a, a repairs like y'all had this last month, you're actually in the hole, and you're having to borrow money from your general fund to pay for it.
So, it does sound like you have an idea about how to, how to get this information communicated in a way we can understand it.
If, if I had the figures from you, what you're making and what your expenses are, then yes, we could...
I doubt that would be a problem.
Well, I'll tell you something, and I think was kind of interesting. When I was over here yesterday, you would remember too well, out here, it's shut down right now because of the, it's chlorine, it's not chlorinating. I'm going to assume that Patterson is going to put in their chlorinating unit on it for you.
Haven't heard of it.
And it's probably going to run you about 3,000 to 4,000 dollars. Right now, I've got four chlorinators sitting in the shop. I can have a guy up here and have that well by going in probably, driving time, an hour and a half.
Yes, sir.
Let me make sure I understand what you're going on. So, y'all say y'all want to take over, y'all want to take over the debt that we have also, right?
Yes, sir.
So, why would we not choose y'all?
I had no idea.
I just want to make sure.
Well, well, one other thing, just like you were saying about number two. If number one well goes down, we have a generator. Our, if power, we lose power to number one, we've got a generator at this point to power it back up. Number two goes down, we have nothing. Number two's down right now, so what happens if number one goes down? We going to be out of water for two weeks again? We've been there.
We've been there, and it's no fun either. We had to call, family members called Austin over.
We had to borrow money to get it done?
That's when Jen was mayor, yeah.
That, that's something else that we would do, it wouldn't be immediate, but if we took your system, that well down there doesn't have a generator on it, we would purchase a generator and hook it to that well, so that in the event that you lost the power, we, we would have one or the other well to be able to pump.
Because we went for weeks and weeks and weeks, yeah, okay.
So, I, the question that I think keeps getting asked, and I've not heard an answer to, you, you guys have to at least break even.
Yes, sir.
So, when you buy a new pump, say that well goes out tomorrow, after, the day after you do the contract, how are you going to recover that money? Where's that money come from? I think that's what people are asking.
Well, right now, on our estimate, just by comparing it to our other well, you're out about 5,000 dollars a month to the Patterson Group for doing your system. And then, I don't know what other income you have coming in on it, but we would actually, you know, be doing your wells and stuff, so that, that cost would be gone. So, that's 5,000 dollars that's out of your expenses that we can take out, so we would be net profit of 5,000 plus right there. And then, I, I don't know what else, I mean, I don't know future water sales and stuff like that coming in, we would make some money back, but we would, every month, put that back, and then, when we... we had enough money to do a project that we needed to replace, like buy a generator, or if the well goes down, you have insurance through TML. You insure your wells, and if that pump got struck by lightning or something, then it would pay for it. Now, if it just got wore out, usually the life on a, on a well pump and stuff is seven to ten years, most times about seven, seven to eight years. And it costs, this well's gonna be what, about fifty thousand probably for a new pump? That, that one being a high-capacity motor's gonna be close to a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, Todd told me, I talked to the well puller that actually pulled this number two well, and he says, "If it goes down just right now, the way things are going, you're talking a hundred thousand plus to get it back operational." And that hurts, big time.
Okay, if we did a contract with y'all, say, two years down the road, we're all not happy with it, city council's not happy with it, or something's not adjusted, in your contract, will we be able to break away or not?
There won't be a contract. If we, if we did it with you, we would actually take ownership of your sewer and your water. It would, it would belong to Hickory Creek. But along with that, we would, we would be taking all your expenses, which is, I don't know exactly the, the cost of your loan through Texas State Water Development, where I know it's in the millions. We would've seen that till, I think it's two thousand and forty-seven, you're paying.
Thirty years, yeah.
So we would be paying that, not, not you, from now on, so you would be able to spend any money on other things.
If you all take, would we have to still boil our water if this chlorine was in it?
No.
Oh, God. We'd be able to drink it?
Are you planning to put the wells on top instead of downing the wells? The pumps, are you, are you thinking?
Instead of submersible.
Submersible?
Yeah.
Put 'em on top, they last longer?
They're, that well out there, he told me a while ago, it's right around fifteen hundred feet down. Now, the well itself is drilled down to thirty-three hundred feet.
Thirty-three.
And I imagine it's hot.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I live right here on Bonham Street, and it's so hot in the summertime, I have to put ice in my bathtub. Honest to God. So, yeah, that well is hot.
And honestly, there's not a whole lot that we can do about the water temperature coming up. My understanding is around a hundred and thirty-five degrees. Our, our water is somewhere in the one-seventeen. In the well, at the wellhead, it's like a hundred and feet. So I'm not exactly sure what we can do about as far as the temperature, other than doing a chilling tower, and that'd be pretty expensive.
We're used to it. We don't need any water.
It's like your electric bill will be going down, but your hot water heater's not working.
But mine's gas anyway, so in the summertime, mine's.
And if your water is anything like our water, your electric, your hot water heater won't last over about five years. You're gonna have to move it.
Well, we have so much residue. When I had my hot water heater changed, I've had it changed twice in ten years. I have two in the house. There's this gritty, sandy stuff, I don't know what it is, and he says every time, "That's what's burning your tank up." Will that stop if y'all put?
We will never control it.
You don't have a filter or anything you're not gonna put on the pump?
Well, they, they will do regular flushes on all the lines and all that. And I don't know that is being done.
You're required by law to flush your lines.
Yeah, I knew Robert Hayes, he used to do that, yeah.
We have a hundred and twenty-seven flush points on our system that we have to, it takes one full-time person to do at all times.
That's all he does is flush. This last year, this last summer, when, you know, everybody was running short on water, we kinda slacked off a little bit, and TCQ come in and went to me, "You can't do that." And I said, "Listen, you know, everybody's running out of water." We didn't put any restrictions on anybody, so you could use all the water you wanted. But that lady, but TCQ told me, she said, "I don't care if you run out of water, you still gotta flush every day." And I'm telling you.
Well, you can tell the difference when they do it.
When you do this, and you just turn that so to hit my garden? I would if I could.
Well, the only thing I'm worried about is that if you own it, then in the future, oh man, you could price this out of water. That's the only thing I'm afraid of.
If, if we do a price increase on you, we have to notify the Public Utilities Commission.
It's all regulated by the state.
And they will review it, and then, I think it's thirty days, you tell.
Yeah, so if there was to be a rate study done, and we were gonna go up, or Hickory Creek went up on your rates, it would go to the PUC. The PUC's not gonna turn it down, but you have thirty days to notify the PUC of a complaint on it, and you'd have to give a justification of why you had that complaint.
I, I know, we're paying more than even Capel, Flower Mound.
Commerz.
All of them, we're paying more for water than any of them. Are you guys gonna be able to get us down a little bit?
I think we'd have to see what your rates are at now before they could really make a comment on going down or up with where you are, but I don't think right now, in the immediate future, there's no plan of doing either one of those. It's gonna, because y'all will be operating as your own separate entity. So they'll keep y'all kind of going with how you're going, and then as we start to step back and evaluate your system, when you need to make upgrades and everything, if you do need to go up, there will be another meeting where you would be able to come and they would discuss it.
All your rate increases have to be gone through?
I personally went on your website today and compared prices for just my house, and going with y'all, I would pay about ten dollars a month more.
Ten dollars more?
I'm, I'm outside the city limits.
We have, would you pay a dollar a month for the fire department? Will that still go to the fire department?
It's on your water bill? Yeah, and then if need be, it could be a deal to where the city could set it up to where it goes, you pay that to another portion, like directly to the city, so it can go to the fire department. But if need be, it could be, yeah, they can.
We could handle it.
The trash pickup won't be on their bill either.
That's probably where it is.
And then we can always put miscellaneous on there, so you won't know what it is. And nobody, I don't have answers.
I do, no, you can't do that.
I'm wondering, because before, they were adding ten dollars for this and ten dollars for that, if that went through the water department to be checked, where did that money, our increases? Because all of a sudden, they're saying, "Oh, you got ten dollars more on your bill." And nobody told us what it was for. And that's how our bill got so high. Because since I've been here six years, they have raised it three times, ten dollars here, ten dollars here, and another ten dollars. And I'm like, "What is the ten dollars for, and who's that going to?"
That was to pay the grant back.
Yeah, probably just to offset your costs, the, the cost of the operating system.
So you guys aren't gonna be doing that, right?
No, I mean, if our cost, if chlorine went up, electricity doubled like it has in the last year, and a little bit of price increase.
Because right now, I'm paying more for my water than I am my electric.
We, we don't just raise our rates for, like I said, we don't make a profit on anything. Everything that we make, we have to put back into the system. We don't, no, no one on our, our system would get dividends or anything like that. It's all strictly nonprofit, and it goes right back.
Where's your paycheck come from? Where's your paycheck?
I don't get paid.
You work for nothing.
I work for nothing.
Something that we do that a lot of places don't, they're starting to begin to, and I don't know if it would really be that detrimental here, but we have such a large area, a hundred and fifty square miles, and we have a lot of places, there's no water lines. So back ten years ago, I convinced them, we need to start doing our own work, because when you have a contractor come in, as a rule of thumb, sixty percent of what you're paying out goes to labor, forty percent goes to material. We bought a trencher machine and paid quarter million dollars for it, and paid for it the first year. We do all the work ourselves. We don't pull our wells, we can't do that, but laying new lines, doing all the repair work, we do it all ourselves. Right now, we've got fifteen employees, and we're getting ready to add some more.
We try everything possible to keep our costs down, so I'm, I'm a customer too, but, you know, y'all would be, so we're not gonna raise prices if we're gonna have to. And then we can always have a public hearing to get input before we do anything, so.
Well, we have on our board a woman that's ninety-two years old. She is really a sweetheart. Every time we talk about a rate increase or anything, no, no, no. So just two months ago, we did a rate increase, and it was a little bit more than what I expected, so when it come around for a vote, Brad said, "Do I have a motion to do the rate increase?" She raised her hand up. She was the first one, because she realized after what we discussed, we were gonna have to be, to do it. Our CPA, we don't do it, but our CPA tells us that we need to do a small rate increase every year, just to kinda keep up with inflation.
So that's what, the loan that we're paying, that's what they've done with us? You gotta raise it X amount of money every year, just so that you can get, accumulate and get this paid back?
But if they take over, that's gonna cease, right?
That's gone, yes.
So like, right now, we have two thousand gallons at a base price, how do you guys work that?
Well, we don't know, I mean, we would keep your, your figures right now, probably for at least the first year, maybe the second year, and see where everything lies, and then, and then go from that. Right now, our structure is we pay forty-three dollars base fee, and then we have a tier system, the more gallons that you use, then you pay a certain amount per thousand gallon.
So your base rate is for how many gallons?
Our base rate doesn't cover any, it's just a regular fee, forty-three dollars, that's And depending on how much water you use, depends on the rest of your bill, what it's comparable to West Leonard, Southwest Fanning, North Hunt, and some others, we're, we're all real close to each other, within just maybe five, six, seven, eight dollars a month on our, our cost.
So you, we would still be charging people who live in the country on septic tank, what, septic higher than the city?
See, you just had a water bill with us.
Yeah.
Most of our customers are rural customers. Yeah, we're, we're all rural water, we don't have any, any customers within.
Yeah, they have a different fee for the people that live in the city and around town, city limits.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, for the first year, they're talking about keeping y'all at the same, and then most likely, we would end up doing a rate study on the, on the town. Kinda figure out where everything lies, which all that information, we would have a meeting, and you would be able to see it in a public forum.
Yeah, the way, the way it is here, I mean, it's, if you've got water in the sewer, it's a specified amount, and if you only have water, then it's different, you know?
We don't, we don't have any, anything really to base what, exactly what you're paying right now, or how much water you're using, the cost and everything. We'll, we'll be trying to get that information from, from the mayor and the council, and we can compare and see where it's really at and everything.
We have other clients from our firm that are doing the same thing, small towns that are merging into water systems, like the City of Gunner is merging into Mustang Sud, and so we're working that right now. So we do have experience going through it.
What if it's a, if you have a city lot, or you're, you're just in the city, you have a lot, and there was prior water there before, but there hasn't been for like ten years or so, can you go back in and, and turn that back on?
We normally pull the meter because of the backflow prevention, and then our meters cost us about four to five hundred dollars a piece to put them in. If we have one that's sitting in the ground and not making any money, then that's money we're losing.
But if that person wants water now, and there hasn't been any there for over ten years?
We require on, on our district that if you have a meter, you have to pay the base fee a month. So if you wanted to keep the meter, then you had to pay the forty-three dollars a month.
What if your, what if your meter already has a backflow, what, what would you do to modify it, or would you have to still pull it?
We're gonna upgrade, if we take it, to master meter, the fixed read, which is a legroom meter, and with it would come with a back, new backflow preventer on it. We'd replace the whole, the whole set.
No, we couldn't, well, we didn't, but.
Well, I mean, we would put new ones on, every meter would have a new backflow preventer with it. We wouldn't take a backflow preventer off an existing meter in there, put it up with.
But I got prices yesterday, or over the weekend, on two hundred and fifty meters, because I wasn't really sure just what your account was. And just to get the backflow preventer, and that's not putting it on, that's just getting it shipped to us, it's gonna run us about seventy thousand dollars for two hundred and fifty of them. And we want, the fee time on them right now is six months. So if I order them today, the salesman I talked to said he ordered his in October, and he hadn't got them yet. Last year, as I said with everything, we actually thought we were gonna run out of meters, and we were in a dilemma, you know, what did we do here? People are needing water here, we've got a new house, we can't, we don't have a meter to put in there. Luckily, I, some people turned their heads, and I managed to come up with enough to keep us going for a while. But it's my understanding, again, today, I talked to another salesman, a lot of the material it's six months getting. It got so bad last year that we actually went out and borrowed a hundred thousand dollars and did, spent it on nothing but repair stuff, repair clamps, anything where we would have a leak, so we would have the material to fix it. Did you call your supplier? I don't have anything. "I need something," I said, "We got five hundred people out of water right here." Said, "We gotta check, maybe another water district or something, see if they've got material." We've actually, a couple of years ago, y'all had some problems, and some of your employees come down and got stuff from us because you didn't have it fixed.
Yes, ma'am.
So y'all are gonna replace the existing meters at no cost, correct?
Yes.
But a meter, if you have a line and you need a meter, or if you're gonna get a new line and you need a beater, need a meter, what would the cost of that, did you say fifty-eight hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's, that's the only drawback, we, I know we're high on that, but we cover such a broad area that we, we have to do that impact fee in order to recover the cost, because we may have two or three customers on one mile line. So we have to have enough money in order to put that line, pipe has gone up from, four inch pipe went from a dollar fifteen a foot to six dollars.
But you're pretty comparable probably to everyone else also. I mean, we're just.
Right. Yep. Not, not taking anything, y'all, y'all are just a little bit behind on, on where everybody is, because I understand that, because you're trying to keep the cost down to a bare minimum. But at the same time, it ends up hurting you in the long run, when you start, if everything starts getting bad, then you don't have that money to recover.
But that's what, you also said that you would be taking on that, so the existing lines, sewer and water, if it needs to be replaced, that's on y'all.
Yes, ma'am.
No matter if it's been there fifty years and it collapsed.
Right, and we're, we're taking a gamble on that, because you can't tell what's in the ground. We're taking your word, what's working, what's not. I mean, I, no, you had an upgrade in your water system, probably what, five? I mean, I know you had an upgrade in your water system probably about five years ago. Somewhere in that system, sewer, we don't know about. So, I know you probably have a lot of the clay tile in the ground still and, but yes, we would assume fixing all the lines at our cost.
Is that meter the same for commercial and residential or is there a difference in a commercial?
That's for residential meter. If you're, if it's a one inch to a six inch meter, then the cost goes up. I'd have to get you those figures, but they're pretty, the impact fees along there for first time. Yes, sir.
I know y'all going digital, but how, before y'all get to the digital stage, how do y'all come out and read the meters before you actually change them over?
Well, you know, how often?
Yes, sir.
Same time you're doing it now, every month. I understand it takes about three days to read your system. We'd probably have someone, a couple of people come up here and read it in a day or day and a half. We just actually have the address of where, what's where your active meters are.
Have to show you where some of them are. That address don't mean nothing. Most of that, the impact fees on the new meters though are going to be like for a new house. That's where you're going to get the majority of your brand-new meter. And if you're building a new house and if six thousand dollars is going to kill you of building that new house, you're in the wrong place because you shouldn't be building that house.
What? You said it was that six months ago.
Now you tell me.
Now you tell me. I've got a slab board.
Might be a good idea to get the meter now.
Order me two.
Oh, I had a customer this year and they were building a house. I couldn't see the house, it was too far off the road. And she called me and wanted a four inch water meter. I said, "A four inch water meter? Yep, that's what I want." I said, "Man, do you have any idea what that's going to cost?" She said, "The plumber says I got to have it." And I said, "Just the impact fee on that meter right there is eighty thousand dollars." And she said, "Oh." I said, "Let me do some checking." So, she come back and she ended up going with a two inch meter, which is still ended up costing her about twenty thousand dollars. That backflow preventer on that thing, we had to put it on there and it has to be tested every year. It was an expensive ordeal. She called me about a month ago and said, "All I really need is just a bigger house meter." And she ran a three inch water line from the meter to her house a mile away.
Wow.
And I told her in the very beginning, you know, we don't try to, we're a customer just like you all are, so we want to get treated right. And you try to talk to some of these people. I don't want to insult anybody here, but I said, "Well, they're from Frisco, they don't know." California people heard us right now.
We have a gentleman here that may have some questions for y'all. We've talked to him since we've talked to y'all. And he's got a proposition also for the county.
So, I'm representing John Questing Real Estate Services and we are looking for some kind of development in the area, you know, like new residential community and things like that. So, we'd like to know what would be the availability of utilities if we are some bed in the vicinity or if we are going to be outside of the coverage?
We're, I'm not really familiar right now with the, where the CCN area is for.
That one right there would be in the city.
It's in the, it's in the CC, within CCN?
Yes. Now, Remington Farms out there. You know where the water line stops? So, it doesn't go out there to Remington?
They did, but it's no longer going there. I'm the last house.
It doesn't go.
It does not go, no, it does not. It doesn't, it used to go across the road, but it does not anymore. They pulled it all out.
So, that property, I don't know how that would, what I mean to play.
Across the bridge?
Right.
Yeah.
That would be Alan's channel, wouldn't it?
Okay. Do you have any, you know, across the?
Across the river?
No, but they, they have some property over there. There's one that was asked.
No, this one is in the city.
So, we're not really the city's engineers, but from just a water perspective, we would want to see where the city stands.
Okay.
On, with their TCQ compliance. Because if you're going to bring them out of compliance, then you're going to have to pay to keep them in compliance. So, it's, it's a numbers game really, just to see how many lots you have here, how many existing connections you have, any connections the city has versus their pumping capacity, their storage capacity, their well production. I mean, we just have to run all those numbers to really see what you would have to do.
How soon are you wanting to put something in?
We are thinking somewhere about maybe a year from now.
Oh, yeah.
Eight to ten months.
Which if this goes through, then you would probably be working with us.
Yeah.
To accomplish that.
Okay.
If you can get with their Dunaway and Farmersville. If you can call his name, Aaron Moreland.
Sure.
If you can talk to him and send him your, I think, what's it called?
Just kind of, if you send this contact.
They can kind of give them.
You can have that one.
They can kind of work up something. It all depends on how far this development is and how, any upgrades and lines back to it and then if, if the city's structure can handle this, what you're wanting to do.
Now, Greg, that.
We think it will. I mean, I just thought.
The other day, the other meeting, it said that right now, we've got like three hundred and thirty meters and that they'd said our wells would hold like a thousand, fifteen hundred or thousand. But that said we could handle a thousand meters without having to do any upgrades.
Right.
Okay.
Would you use our old storage tanks or bring some in so we have extra?
Right now, I think you have the two hundred thousand gallon overhead tank and then, I don't know what the small one is over here, the beige covered tank. I don't know what capacity it is. It's somewhere in about forty to fifty thousand and I don't know what you have out.
As you know, with the lake coming, we got people right here that's building the house. We're going to have more people come in along the way in the next five years.
If we put it over and we needed more storage capacity, we would probably put, rehab the old water tower and putting it back on land too.
And there's another tank over there too.
Yeah.
That you could fix.
You can take the gallon and say, "I don't know why, what, for what reason you took them out of compli, or out of storage."
They didn't save them.
But you can go in there and rehab them and they can spray an epoxy on the inside of it and reseal it and then you can use it. Probably, and certainly a hundred thousand dollars to do it, but we would do that if we needed it to.
Sounds like if he wanted to do what he was saying, if we had an extra storage tank, it'd be perfect for what Mr. Christie's going to try to do.
And the good thing about development is they paid their way.
Yeah.
So, anything that would need to be done, they would have to end up coming for it.
You don't want to have to drill any wells though.
You know, we got fault lines in the town.
We're pacing drilling new wells and add two overhead towers and our cost is going to be about seven million dollars. Estimated cost is about fifty thousand dollars a month. We know what the cost is going to be and we want to keep them down as much as possible.
And we beat on him and his boss both. Get it down, get it down. But, I mean, there's just certain criterias there you have to meet. I mean, we could go with a hundred thousand gallon tank, but we know that in four or five years, it's not going to be enough and we have to do the whole overage over again. You have to think ahead because this area is growing and it's, this lake's going to cause it to grow.
And we're in the same position. Everyone's moving out of Dallas and Plano, moving into Western Hunt County or within our area. And we, we put in about a hundred and sixty meters last year and we're, right now, we're on target to do over three hundred by the end of summer. And we expect the growth to just to keep coming in. We have two or three developers right now talking about some projects they come in. We'd probably add another two or three hundred on top of that, so.
You, you said that you did something similar in Farmersville?
No, he's, he's from Farmersville. That's where they're opposite.
Okay.
Used to be DBI and now they're Dunaway.
Yeah, we work with developments all the time, all over the place.
Do you want to say anything else about the development since this is town hall? Kind of let them know what your plans are?
Yeah, it's kind of very preliminary right now, but I still would like to share it. So, we are planning to do like a kind of a residential, commercial, mixed use kind of development and that's about in, with the frontage and thirty-four. It's about sixty-seven acres that we are planning and then maybe a little bit of RV on the back side of it. And it's going to be a nice mixed use kind of a development that we are looking for. And that's why I was, am here today to see, you know, what they are proposing and then we can get the help from what we're doing with that.
Is this inside the city limits?
Yes.
Yep. Thanks, ma'am.
And to your benefit, since we do our own work, we could do it a lot cheaper than what our contract dues charges.
Hopefully.
And they're going to do like a small strip mall up on the roadside. Yes, comedic stores.
Where's this located at?
Burleson's, you know, Burleson's. Right in that area.
Where Mr. Call used to.
Call, yeah, but I'm just, I'm just trying to give you some, some kind of a area where it's going to be because I may not know who the caller is.
Sorry to have you out of the wallet. Nope, didn't, not at all.
The Cross is straight from the wrecking yard.
Y'all have a planning about this here?
Yeah. Yeah, we had our second meeting last week.
If we had any other engineer, we would have worked with y'all before.
I have no idea.
Probably your city engineer.
Probably KSA.
Yeah, we probably need a new one. I mean, there's lots of change.
Sure. Yeah. Come back with, to their council meeting and discuss this so that, I mean, we, I don't think any of, anybody's set in stone that we got to use KSA or anybody else. I think that's just who's been used in the past, so.
Yeah, if y'all would like, we can definitely come back and give a presentation.
Turnoff valve that we can access on ours?
Yes.
Individual, in case of an emergency?
Yeah, we would have a, so main line comes in, we'd have a feeder line coming to it with your meters, backflow preventer and then a cutoff.
Is that like one of the keys that like we already have? We can.
No, usually it's just a, just like a valve that cuts it off and then you can do it by hand and then after that, you'd be responsible for it to go into your house.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, we require, I don't know if you get well, we require, some of the state requires it does, that on new meter settings, we have a CSI, they call it, which is a customer service investigation. Actually, we, we can go into your house and look, well, we're done with cross connections. If you've got a well out here, we're going to make sure that you hook that well up to your water system. And again, that's what horrifies me here is the fact you don't have any backflow preventing it. So, you could be hooking an old sister in the well out there and we have a leak and suck down all that back end of the water. And then trucking out of your line and some handling the whole town. And that's what we don't want at all.
About everything else?
This is just a small, you'll need to come to a bigger thing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because all the citizens last year.
Just kind of get everybody's view and how, how people feel about it. Town hall, I mean, speak, let everybody know your feelings and how, how you, what you think about it.
We, we talk to our board about it. They're, they're all, if you want to do something, our board's willing to.
The only thing I'm concerned about is going up to, I'm going to talk about it. Then in County Commissioners Court, they said that in between, what? They keep changing the time limit on it, but it's going to become too salty. Our groundwater is going to become too salty. Then what, no. Well, then I want to know, I know he's smiling over there, that's why I'm saying, no, don't even start. So, I want to know what you're going to propose for us after that. That's why I was asking about, then we might have to mix it.
He went on Channel Twelve News and told that.
Now, yep, they, it'll be about ten, between ten and twenty years that this is supposed to be happening and I am concerned about it.
Yeah, he came to our board meeting on the twenty-first, New County Ham and Cup, and said the same thing to it. We haven't heard any evidence that that's the case. Your well goes into the Palatzi, which is the Trinity. It's not near as salty as the Woodbine, which is where our wells are at. And our sodium levels are all within TCQ, still, and they don't expect it to be. They haven't risen in salinity in the twelve years I've been on board.
They, they will check their well. Now, just last week, this well they were drilling out here for the lake, they took samples and everything for it. We have four wells. I sent samples two years ago to Texas A&amp;M and I said, "I want a full spectrum done on this. I want to know what kind of water we have." And we're in the Woodbine, which is the aquifer above where you all are. The farther south you go, the saltier it gets, but it is within standard, state standards of being okay for human consumption. That's one thing I would probably do here, at least if you want a well, just take a sample and send it out just out of my curiosity. But if Florida is running out of water, there's nobody here in their lifetime that's ever going to say that.
Even with severe drought that's supposed to be coming?
Fannie County's in a groundwater district and it's constantly modeled. So, they know exactly how much water is in all the reservoirs and everything. And so, they, I think they, they look at it every five years, I believe, and it's continued to stay on the same timeline. And the good thing is that as time moves on with the lake coming in and everything, a lot of people will be coming off groundwater and they'll go to surface water, which is going to allow us to last a little longer in the groundwater community. But that's the good part about having them give us rights to that water. So, if worst comes to worst, then we do go to surface water in this town. Since you've got the backing from Ralph Hall.
But those rights that they keep talking about, is that water out of the lake or is that water out of the well?
Out of the lake. Out of the lake and that shouldn't belong to you.
It's an allocation of water.
Yeah, that shouldn't belong to you. To y'all.
To us?
Yes, if we go, the gra, what you're all just talking about is the groundwater, but later. But later, that lake water shouldn't go to you. If we want to, it still belongs to the city if the city's able to use it.
Oh, yeah, if it, the city would use it. The, I mean, it would be a massive project to take a treatment plant from here all the way to Hickory Creek system. And plus, they.
And they wouldn't allow us to do it.
Yeah, they're.
They, they won't let you. We can only sell it back to people in Fanning County.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, that water would stay here. It's just, I think when they were talking about, we would want it transferred over, it said that it was in Hickory Creek. Because if they were to take over, this CCN would technically say Hickory Creek said. So, but yeah, it would, that water would be allocated to the city.
So we would be able to use it to sell to business, it'd be yours. Then they would go to use.
Allocation would be better. We wouldn't ever use it just like you're not, as long as you're on groundwater, you're not going to be able to use that for anything.
But it would be your water?
No.
Yeah, we, I mean, we would never use it. That's, yeah, we would, we would be transferred to, to allocation by us.
Oh, I bet you do. I sound right.
Why?
Because you're out here asking for the groundwater, not the surface water from, for Trinity. So that means they get all of the water. Let's say we, we got, I don't know, a million dollars somewhere, whatever, and started our own water treatment plant, and then sold it because other, they were out of water and they, we became partners or whatever. I don't know how the money gets there. Very godmother. But anyway, it goes, and we, we're the ones who should be able to sell it if we want to in the future. Why should you get that water, that, the lake water? I didn't give up my damn what, money, my land for y'all to get the bu, the water.
I guess, you're saying that if the city wanted to take the water, treat it.
Well, I was the one who was the pig on this one.
You're saying that the city wanted to take the water, treat it, and sell it to another system?
System, yes.
Oh, okay. Then, I mean, I guess you could do it. But really, it would, if you were going to use the water and you were going to build that plant, you would probably just use it in the city.
Yeah, why would you sell it to somebody else?
We have the option to sell to other people, but only in Fanning County. And if, if you wanted to sell it to Hunt County, they'd have to pay half of, the contract says they'd have to pay half of what it costs to build the lake, Topper Trinity. That's why I'm asking.
Do you know what the percentage of the allocation that you're given off of it?
You know.
Five percent of the volume of the lake, which I understand it amounts to about a million and a half gallons a day.
Give or take, because we don't know what the level's going to be.
That's the five percent of the volume part.
Yeah, I mean, it could be dry ninety percent of the time, and we, you know, and then we don't get it.
I mean, it's something that we can discuss and everything. It's not, it's not a deal breaker for us. But I would think that we assume millions of dollars of debt, and we're going to run your system, then we would be afforded the rights to, to all your water.
Then I wouldn't have had to sell to Upper Trinity, because I don't want the damn lake here in the first place. And I didn't want to have to sell. That doesn't mean I want all the rights to go to someplace else.
It's, it's something that's negotiable. It's not something that we're going to set on. But we just started talking. We haven't really had to discuss with, with anybody.
Haven't even seen the contract yet.
Yes. Something Mike and I did talk about, that our, our first most point towards you is right on the north edge of Wolf's Head. And over a period of time, we would probably run a six inch water line from that point and tie it into your, the end of your line on your six inch. So if something did happen, we would be able to turn our valves on and, and feed your system from our wells.
Okay. We already have one, Hunt County, correct me if I'm wrong, but we already have one. And there was a conflict, and they just either cut the line loose or gouged it off or whatever. And I believe it's the Hunt, Hunt County.
Bilton Road.
No, I think it's Hunt County.
It's on fifty.
Yeah, on fifty, Highway Fifty. Yeah, North Hundred. Yeah. So that, that's already in place, and it was put there so that if we did run out of water, whatever, we could, you know, either, either way. And, but there was conflict, and that got disposed of or whatever reason. But we have had discussions that maybe that could be put back.
Well, we'd say, we would, we would just hook your system in by ourselves, and we would feed you from there.
Right.
That's something that may have long range. If it was in next few years, it's probably a five year plan.
Or y'all may want to talk to them and say, hey, you know, like this would be a thing, you know, just in case. I don't know about that, so.
You know, we could hook onto you with a two inch line, and that would do any good.
Right.
For us to hook onto you, to give you enough water to sustain yourself, we would have to go at least a six or eight, wouldn't we?
Yeah, and then over that distance, it might be an eight.
Right.
But we have, like, we have their system modeled, and if it was turned into where they took over the Donu system, we would get their maps brought into the model, and so, or get y'all's maps brought into their model, and we would be able to figure everything and tuck that up.
Well, thanks for coming. We appreciate you this time.
This is a process on our part, too. We don't know, I mean, do we get a lot of facts from you and then get the engineers involved in it? We don't know exactly all the, the due balance on it. We're willing to work with you and, and help and do whatever we can. Like I said, we was, we was asked to do the Patterson work, and we're just not really into that scope of type work. But we are looking to grow, so we just made the proposal, and it's up to, you know, the citizens, whoever, whether you want to do it and what you do, then we'll, we'll proceed and go through.
Well, thank you. So, we appreciate you coming in, giving your input, because we need that.
We appreciate y'all here in South.
Well, we pride ourselves in, during the dry summer months, that everybody uses all the water in Eaton. North Texas will probably start putting restrictions in about a month. And all the water districts around us will go on restrictions. And, I mean, they restrict, they, when they say you can't water your, your driveway, they have people going around to watch, and if you water them, they'll shut the water off. They'll give you one notice, they'll find you and shut the water off. Am I right?
Yeah.
Uh, we don't do that. I mean, I encourage you to use water. More water you use, the more money we make. Back during the winter, when we had those ice storms, uh, I was told this was the only one surrounding us that still had water. Nobody else was out of water. And over the years, we managed to get generators on and everything. And I've got a crew of men that are out there at the whole time. If we, we'll close a valve here. Okay, we've got a little leak over here. Let's close this valve so they can keep having water. And that's the way we would do it here. I mean, it's just, we were talking about it before we come up, that you've got seven sewer lift stations. What if we went into a storm and electric was going to be off for four or five days? So that's what we were talking about. Well, we'll get some generators so we can go out there, figure out a way to quickly hook it up, and then it goes off, and it's going to be off for over twenty-four hours. We have generators there pumping. Now, used to, you didn't have to worry with it, because if you don't have any water, you're not going to have any sewers. But if we've got generators on and you've got water, you're going to use a sewer.
Sure.
I don't know what timeframe y'all are on your repairs with Patterson right now, but, but we are probably, by the time we get notified, we get our guys over here probably within an hour. And usually, it's an hour and a half to two hours for a repair of a small line. If it was an eight inch line, it'd probably be three hours out. Take that if they come within probably two hours.
Eight or something like that, or ten weeks, not?
Two weeks.
Yeah. And then he, he is what is killing us.
Well, we had, when I first came here, I had a second eight inch line, and we were averaging about seventy-eight leaks a year on it. Eight inch, under about eighty pounds of pressure. And believe it or not, it never happened between eight and five. It was always one or two o'clock in the morning. And believe it or not, as soon as the water goes off, the phone gets ringing, I'm out of water. You're supposed to be in bed. I don't know why you're calling here out of water. So I convinced them, I said, you know, for what it's costing us to repair this, these leaks, uh, we can borrow the money, put in an all new line, and save money. And that's what we did. And we put fifty-three thousand feet, that was before a year, I think. Uh, and to this day, we've not had a single leak on that line that we put in. So.
We definitely asked them to, don't mandate anything, repair and fix it. We don't want to do this again. And we constantly do the same thing over and over and over. Uh, some of them have been repaired, I know, four or five times.
It's crazy.
It's crazy.
We had leaks because we went out and dug it out. Had duct tape on it. And the funny thing about it, when I mentioned that during the board meeting, one of the board members was kind of just just telling his head like this, and he used to work the water here sometimes.
Siri, do you have any more questions?
I think I'm good. I may have to talk to them and then see if they'll help them more. But I think, I'm good.
Does anybody have any questions for him, since he's here about his, the development?
How many houses are you looking at?
Uh, I need to refer, but at least about seventy-five to hundred.
Seventy-five hundred?
No, seventy-five to one hundred.
Oh.
Okay, sorry. I'm going to slap her sale. It's okay, she's new to town, right?
You're also, you're also adding some other things, Greg was mentioning, besides residential or?
Yeah, we do have a commercial on the frontage, uh, you know, facing the thirty-four.
What are you idea here?
Uh, it's a kind of a retail strip right now, that, that's what we are planning for. Uh, we don't know what exactly is going to be there, but mostly like a community-based retail strip. That's what we are looking for. We are not looking for any gas stations or anything like that, but just retail. Yeah.
Do you have any, do you have any special concepts?
We have a concept line that we shared earlier, so I can email it again.
That would be great, because if you shared it, it has not been received by this chair.
Okay.
We only got three, and I apologize.
Everybody don't leave one, it's okay. Just, somebody gets one.
I think we can get.
Yeah.
Is there a, if I take a picture of it?
Yeah, sure, no problem. How do you ask?
Council, have you, y'all, have you more questions for us at this time?
But we thank you for coming.
Oh, so the engineers did want to talk to y'all a little bit, actually.
Okay.
So other topics?
Do you want to?
What are we going to talk about?
Are we going to talk about other topics?
Yeah.
Sure. How about a park? How about a park?
A park.
We had one set up.
Do we have property set aside currently for a park?
Do we?
Are we do?
Do you?
Do you? Not that I know of.
Do you have property that could be?
Not that I know of.
That was one of the things that Siri was a part in y'all's.
Yeah, they, we, we are planning to do like a dog park and maybe like a grand swimming pool. And there is, there are some discussions going on for a, a driving golf range as well. But we are very, very, we are ready in that, in those discussions.
So, um, I'm still pretty new here. But that's awesome. That'd be cool. Thank you. But do we, I mean, I don't know, do we, what property does the city have? What, what property does the city own? I mean, is there an opportunity to look at something that's? Because we've been talking about it, so what's on our, what's on our minds?
The property on fifty is owned by the city, that hundred acres that are at least seventy, seventy-five? Seventy up to Upper Trinity for their staging area.
That's the industrial part?
Uh, right. Mostly, um, I guess we anticipated that we'd have thirty acres on the frontage there to develop as the city saw fit.
And it may turn into something more. Upper Trinity is real close mouth about anything they're going to do, but they did say that they were planning, and this is previously, um, that they were planning like to put a covered pavilion or whatever, large, I guess for their storage or whatever for now, and then it would stay when they left. So that could turn into something. But at this point, you know, nothing is, I, I haven't heard anything else about it, so. Um, but we've got that, and then we've got a piece right across from, oh, damn it.
We got a lot right beside Rita's.
Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about. Uh, kind of the, the corner of Taylor and, is it all the way to sixty-four?
Paris.
Paris.
I don't think it goes all the way to sixty-four. So Taylor and Paris, there's a little corner there, it's got an old barn or something sitting on it. And then we've got some on fifty, uh, where the sewer plant comes from fifty, oh, you know, back. That could be something, maybe. As it was brought up, maybe, hey, maybe for revenue, maybe we could sell some of this property, you know, or whatever. But it's never been formally discussed or anything.
And Rita's going to want an environmental study to make sure those kids don't stir up any dust.
Don't have their poor weathered out in the middle of the road.
Any more questions? Yes, sir.
So, uh, I was excited to hear everybody's wanting to clean up, because the chamber has a cleanup session set up for Saturday. I had a specific question, though, for the city council, and it just came up as we were preparing to work on stuff. So over here behind the trail, over here on the trail, there's been quite a bit of illegal dumping that, that just has happened. We're going to try to clean that up, including some of our own mess, and flatten it out. It was brought to my attention, there are some culverts over there from the last, some of the last water stuff for road. I'm not sure what it was. I've got a picture here if y'all would like to see it. But there's some large culverts over there, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure what to, I'm not sure what to do with them. So, and this is, it's right on the trail over by the, it's down there on that end where the road.
Yeah, it's been, it's been there a while.
Yes.
For some reason, I almost say still they need to add something to do.
Are they?
I don't think that's been there.
No, these are, these are new.
I don't believe those were there. They were kind of over on that other, on the road over there. There used to be some stuff over there. This, this doesn't really matter. I don't know what the timeframe was. I haven't seen.
I'm sure that's relevant.
It wasn't, there's some. Yeah, yeah. So, so is this on the trail property?
Yes.
Yes, for sure.
Yes.
There's all the piles of stuff where, you know, there's, there's three or four piles there. One of them was some, it's an asphalt, it's been there. Then there was some little crap piled up over there with stuff in it. We're just going to take care of that. There's a couple of other piles. I have no clue what's inside of them. We'll find out. We'll bring some equipment in to hopefully, they can move that stuff. But these here, if, if you guys can move them, it'd be great. If not, you have a place that we can move them to. If not, you have a place that we can move them. That would all need to go, from what I'm seeing, the majority of it would need to go to the scrapyard. You know, I mean, I don't know what's kind of under them or whatever.
I think, actually, one of the questions that I heard that broke my ears up was, is this something that was a responsibility of the contractor when they moved the road?
Yeah, well, I was assuming it was, that's why I assume it's legal, don't this, but, but was that done from Bill Street?
It was, that was on air three years ago.
But Bill Street was, was.
It's been in the last 18 months, hasn't it?
Yeah.
So sometime in the last.
I don't think that's from here, but I might be wrong. I don't know. But one thing I will say, be very, 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 very careful on the properties that you're on cleaning up. Make sure they're not private property.
Not be on private property.
I'm just making a suggestion, so. Believe me, we are not going to be, we're not going to be on all the nonsense going on. I understand, yeah. If that railroad track was there, it's right there by the train station. And. I'm going to look at it, because I honestly haven't seen it, but. I mean, we can move it if we, while we have the equipment there, if we know what to do. We just need to know where, where, where we can put it so that we can level that place out. So, thank you.
Is there any more questions? If not, I thank everybody for coming.
I don't know if it's question, comment, or what, but I've been watching, the county is having some issues with coming up with funds to fix their courthouse and everything else. I don't know if anybody else saw their little, their little report about a couple of issues and funding problems they're having. I also saw when, I don't know what the board was, the water thing when that guy was here. You know, they're talking about people coming out and building these million-dollar houses on the lakes and how they're going to be second homes and how that's going to be tax revenue. Okay? We understand as a board that that's tax revenue for the county. If it's not in the city, we won't get any of this money.
Correct.
So as the county's talking about all this great stuff that's going to happen, that's going to fix their courthouse. That's not going to fix anything on the city limits.
That is correct.
So if we want to raise money for the city to get our roads fixed, we've got to get income coming in to the city with houses or some kind of.
And that's what our planning and zoning is for the city.
Yeah. I've only been the one and all we talked about was them, so I don't know what the rest of it is. I'm sorry, I didn't get any others. But anyway, I just want to make sure that the guy on the water board, what's his name? The?
Newt.
Cunningham? Judge Cunningham's the same guy that was talking about, he's trying to get money for his county.
Right.
So.
And that's what he's, he should be concerned about.
Yes.
But he should be concerned about everything in the county also.
Yes. It just sounded really funny, because that, you know, when he was talking about it, he kept talking about, all this money's coming in, all this money's coming in. Well, it's not coming into the city. He's talking to mostly the people here in Ladona that are in the city. And then I see the next couple of days later, I see him talking about how bad he needs the money. Some people have a double agenda, I guess, is what I'm saying. Be sure to pay attention to that when we have an opportunity for this gentleman to build houses in the city.
Right.
Or in the county.
And, and, and that's, that's where it is. Basically, the reason we asked him to come tonight is kind of present what he has, whatever, to the, to the citizens, but definitely attend a planning and zoning, you know, and let us know that they're, they're going to do a much better presentation with, with other stuff involved. And, you know.
So, yeah.
Our planning and zoning is five years behind, so.
I don't have a question, statement, whatever story.
All right. I thank you all for coming and hopefully we'll have more of these meetings to where we can keep you updated on what's going on in town, because that is what I want y'all to know, is what we're doing, okay?
Yeah.